Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. I told Chairman Tatum we do have a couple of members who are running a bit behind, but we want to go ahead and get the meeting started. I know some people have things they need to do, so we want to get started. They'll be joining us a little bit later.
And first order of business, if everyone please stand. Chairman Worley, let's lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While we're still standing, if you will, join me in prayer, and I'll leave in our invocation. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking and praising you for all the many blessings of life that you give us each day. The Lord has come together in this joint meeting. I pray that as we discuss the business of Franklin County, I pray that your will be carried out and your will be followed. And Lord, I would be remiss if I didn't lift up our fellow supervisor Tommy Cundice White, and she is in the hospital. Be with her, be with her doctors, be with Mr. Cundice, he's on the road traveling. And Lord, as we go through the remainder of this meeting, I again just ask for your guidance and leadership and wisdom and everything we say and do. In Jesus' most holy and precious name, I pray and ask it all. And I'd like to welcome everyone that's watching us today via live stream. Technology is wonderful when it's working. And my understanding, we are streaming live for the citizens of Franklin County and those that are out and about. And I'd like to take just a few moments right now, just to start, and we'll go around and get acquainted with everyone in introductions. I am Tim Tatum, Chairman of the Board Supervisors. Also, I represent the Blue Ridge District of Franklin County.
Okay. Good afternoon again. My name is Jeff Worley. I'm the Chairman of the Franklin County School Board, representing the Rocky Mountain District. I will, I'll go ahead and introduce our members that will be late. Dawn McCray is our Vice Chair. She represents the Boone District. Also, Carlotta Whiting, who will be joining us also a little bit late, represents the Snow Creek District. So, and Dr. Sears.
I'm Kevin Sears, the Supervisor of the Franklin County Public Schools.
Carlotta Greer, I represent Blackwater District.
John Etu, I represent Gillis Creek.
Jonathan Holly, Blue Ridge District.
Ronnie Mitchell, Blackwater District. And just want everyone here to know, I've got firefighter training at six, so I will be leaving a little early, so I want to apologize for that, for everybody that took their time to come out this evening.
Ronnie Thompson, Boone District.
Nick Mitchell, Snow Creek District. Glad to see everybody here from the school. It's nice meeting with you guys again. Mike Carter, I'm Rocky Mountain District Supervisor.
Good evening, I'm Chris Willow, County District.
Hi, I'm Laurie Smith, Vice Chair of the Board, representing the Gillis Creek District.
And staff around the corner, starting with John Cressfield down on the end. Tell us who you are, John.
John Cressfield, I'm the Principal of High School.
Darrell Spencer, Construction Manager of the Schools.
Jeff Henderson, Woodlode Architects.
Dave Terry, Director of Services, Department of County Public Schools.
Tim O'Malley, Assistant Superintendent.
I'm Curtis Fun Gardner, CTE Administrator for High School.
Hi, I'm Andy Burnett, I'm the School Board Clerk.
Jason Williams, Director of Operations.
Sheriff of Virginia.
Mike Burnett, Assistant County Inspector.
Mark Carter, Director of Finance and Human Services.
Washington Jansen, District Director of Taxpayer.
Don't let him get away with that. He'll be sitting at this table in January.
My name is Jason Powell, I work at Kern College.
Eighteen Minutes Economic Development Specialist, Franklin County.
Kevin Tosh, Director of Tourism.
Jason Tom, Media.
Again, thank you for everyone coming out. And this time, I will turn the floor over to the board here. Partner in Crime, take it over.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Again, we're here tonight to discuss our much anticipated and needed CTE project. We feel like we've made some good strides. I know we've had committee meetings with some public input, stakeholders input. The architect from Mosley has been, he's presented to us a couple of times, come up with a design. And it's really why we're here today. We want to certainly inform the board supervisors where we stand with our new design and how we're going to move forward. So, Dr. Sears, is there anything you want to say before we turn over to perhaps Darrell and Mr. Henderson?
No, just, you know, we really appreciate this opportunity to present it. It's a great design, and it will provide a tremendous enhancement to the quality of our CTE programs and our ability to help prepare students to enter the workforce. Those of you who have been in our current CTE center, we do a great job with what is there, but as things change and requirements change for employability, you know, it is not meeting some of the needs that our employers expect our graduates to be able to do when they enter the workforce. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Henderson.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We're very excited to be here. The first thing I'd like to do is just thank the members of the committee. We've got a very involved and widely represented committee that helped us get to this point. The last time I was here was, I think, early or early in the year at the joint meeting, and we just kind of were outlining our plans at that point. We hadn't really started, but since then, we've met several times as a committee. And I'm going to kind of share a little bit of that process and kind of show you where we are right now at the end of a feasibility study. So, the first thing we did was come up with a vision for this project. And this was sort of a brainstorming exercise, but really kind of set the tone for what we're going to do moving forward. And so, the vision that we came up with is the Franklin County High School CTE facility will provide students in the community opportunities to explore career paths that prepare for real world experiences, meet the current and future needs of a skilled workforce, and drive economic development. So that is sort of the touchstone, and whenever we're thinking about this project, we're going to come back to that vision and make sure that it's in alignment with our plan moving forward. One of the biggest things that the committee did was really talk about what are going to be the needs at the future programs that we're going to need in a CTE facility so that we're providing job training for the workforce of the future. And so, we did a lot of, we had a lot of discussion about what sort of programs we would offer, and then how that translates to the spaces that we're including in the program. So I have that, those programs listed on the left side that we're including in the new CTE building. We have automotive service and collision, we have a large agriculture lab, animal care lab, horticulture and greenhouse, all four building, five building trades labs, health sciences, a TV lab, technical education, which covers a wide, wide range of topics, culinary arts, cosmetology, ROTC program, and some flexible community space that could be used for community training. Firefighter training came up in our meetings, but also a place for that program that we haven't envisioned yet. In five years, there's going to be jobs that we don't know exist. This might be the place that we would train them. We also talked a lot about how we were utilizing the existing campus and looked at the programs that we already have space for in the current buildings that are not on the west campus. And those included the business labs, criminal justice, journalism, digital music, and family and consumer sciences. So we are not including those type spaces in the new facility because they're already being covered and they're already in adequate space for their program needs. That represents about 25,000 square feet of building space that we're not building that equates to about $13 million that we're not spending on those type spaces. So I'm going to show you just some of the work product before we get to sort of our end product. So these were sort of diagram, quick diagram solutions that we did early on as a group with the committee to certainly, to sort of set the path for our discussions. These were really just intentionally different options to make sure that we're exploring everything. So at our first meeting, we were actually designing spaces. We came up with three options. Option A, utilize the Purdue property exclusively. Options B and C built a significant portion of the program much closer to the existing facilities. In fact, in C, we were actually making physical connections. In B, we were building a standalone piece right in the middle. There's some pros and cons to that. We felt as a committee that it was going to be a little bit more disruptive to the students while the construction was going on, and it was also going to be, require us to rework some of the bus circulation with those options. What we discovered along this process is even if we wanted to put all of our CTE spaces in the middle, right in the middle heart of the campus, we couldn't fit it all in there. So with any option that we had, we were going to have a secondary building off on the Purdue property just to fit everything, everything that we want to build. So the question came down to, and this is just the next level of that, of those iterations, was do we build a standalone building on the Purdue property, which is represented by A1, or do we build, you know, connection piece for some of the classroom type, classroom type spaces, and for some of the more lab intensive spaces, do we build a separate building? As a committee, and then was confirmed by the school board, we're going with option A1. So we're going to show a refined version of that moving forward. Now, I want to stress to you how early are, early on we are in this process. You're going to see some imagery that looks very finished, but we are just at the end of a feasibility study. That feasibility study is to, you know, the goals of that study were to identify what spaces we wanted to include, figure out where on the site it might go, figure out a projected schedule, and figure out some projected costs moving forward. So, we have met briefly with a lot of the staff, and basically on tours, and gotten some feedback there, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done to design the specifics of all the spaces if the project were to move forward. Another issue is we have not really had any significant discussions with the, with the committee about aesthetic choices. So you're going to see some fairly finished looking renderings, but these are all just kind of placeholders, and there's already been some feedback on them, and there'll be plenty of opportunity down the road to, to give that feedback moving forward. So, this is the overall site plan, and just to confuse everybody a little bit, everything has been reoriented from the previous images so that north is up. The main campus is to the left here, Tanier Grove is here, Purdue Lane is here. We rotated it just so that moving forward, north is going to be up, and now that we're down to one option, it's a lot easier to fit things on the page. A big characteristic of the Purdue property is significant grade change. So there's a, a high spot is up here, and there's significant grade change down to the low end on this side. And a lot of the strategy with this option was dealing with that grade change in a way that was advantageous to the project. So this is that, that site view that's just a little bit closer in. So Tech B is still into the upper left here. There are two major entrances to the building. There's a student entrance on the west side. This is sort of that existing parking lot that is on the high side of Tech B. It's kind of at the same level as the track, which is right here. So we're developing a new access point and student entrance with some new ramping so that we can have handicap accessibility from the mates building to this new building would occur here, and there will be a student entrance here. We're also developing some additional parking that's going to be needed, and a new public entrance at this location on the sort of northeast side of the site. So as I mentioned, we've been, really been working with the terrain and trying to minimize the amount of earthwork that we're going to be using. So, the building form takes on a fairly linear approach, and we've kind of set the building on one contour so that on the north side of the building, there's walkout access at grade, and then on the south side of the building, there's also walkout access at grade, but it's one level lower. So it's sort of a split level approach. So, the north side is the high side, and the south side is the low side. You're going to see that in three dimensions in just a moment. Developing an access road from the parking lot back to the back of the building. Sort of that low south side houses a lot of the larger, more lab type spaces, so they require a higher volume and more deliveries from trucks, building trades, automotive, things like that. And a lot of the more classroom type spaces are on the, on the north side that don't require the volume of, of workspace. So this is an image of the upper floor plan. So the grade access from this floor is off of, from the top. So again, we have the student entrance to the left and the public entrance to the right. I'm going to work from right to left. So as you come in that public entrance, there'll be a secure vestibule. We have included some administrative support, support staff in there. We kind of envisioned the Director of CTE, maybe Assistant Principal would be housed in this building. Probably a reception, so, you know, after the bell rings, visitors from the committee would be required to go in this entrance and check in for, for safety and security. Off of that main lobby, we have the culinary arts program with the kitchen and two classrooms and a dining space. We're indicating that dining space will be kind of open to that lobby, so it could be used for multiple different functions in addition to this dining. That's a decision we haven't really talked through yet, but that's just a possibility. As you work your way down the hall, there's some bathrooms and some support spaces. We have a cosmetology program with an outside entrance in case the public is coming, coming in for services. This is our flex lab and classroom. Again, that's that future roofing type space or community training type space. And then the rest of the classrooms on this floor are sort of the, they're the CTE spaces that fit in a sort of a standard classroom in terms of volume. They might have some specific equipment, but they're not the large lab hands-on spaces where you're driving in trucks and things like that. So we have the CAD and cyber program, computer and cyber programs here, electronics here. We have a nursing lab with two classrooms and some storage and support. We have a new ROTC play space with support spaces of offices and storage and armory. And then we have a new TV lab and editing space and classroom. And then on the end, we have some, some additional bathrooms that will serve this building, but will also be able to be unlocked from the outside and locked off from the inside. So if you have an after-hours event at the track, it's providing some bathrooms up on that, up on that same level, some accessible bathrooms for that, for that use. In terms of vertical circulation, at the main entrance, we have a stairwell that goes down, in the middle, we have a stairwell that goes down, and on this end, we have a stairwell that goes down, as well as an elevator in the middle. And that goes down to the lower floor plan. So on this floor plan, all the at-grade access is on this side of the building, and this is essentially a retaining wall that's kind of built into the building, or built into the hill. So working from right to left, we have the automotive program with associated classroom, the collision repair with associated classroom, and associated paint booth. We have the ag program with two classrooms and the welding component right next to it, trying to get some synergies between agriculture using the welding lab and also collision repair. We have a horticulture lab with detached greenhouse to get maximum, the best sunlight for that greenhouse, decided to detach it. We have some support spaces for the HVAC, and then we have the advanced manufacturing lab with a maker space next to that. And then the building trades are all along here. So there's a building trades lab for each individual trade, but there's also a space off of all of those labs where the different building trades can come together like they do in real life and work on projects together. So all of these spaces are, those are fairly high volume. There's a lot of like garage doors to get into those spaces on this, on the backside of the building. You're going to see that in some of the renders moving forward. Finally, almost left out, animal care is on the end. So, one of the things that, placing animal care here, there's, there's opportunity for some green space off to the side. There's also all that parking area so they can bring in a trailer for, when they bring in a horse for that class. So there's space for the trailer to turn around, a little paddock for the, for the horse to be outside. So again, this is just some imagery of what it could be. We haven't really talked about aesthetics yet. But this is the backside of the building. So this is that lower floor level that we were just looking at. So this is automotive, advanced technology, and then start to be the building trades. Here's that shared build area, the greenhouse. And you can really see how the, the grade is dropping off here as we continue to move down that hill. Here's a rotated view. So now we're looking at the high side. So this is the, the north side of the building. So this is that student entrance, the modified parking lot, the new parking lot, and then sort of the, the classroom type CTE spaces with the public entrance on that end. And that's just another lower view of the student entrance and the public entrance moving forward. And then a view of the, the public entrance, looking back towards the high school and the track, and coming around towards the back. That's the automotive. So, just got a little animation. Hopefully that'll run a little smoother than that. Just a little fire round to give you a little bit better feel of how the, the grades are moving. So one of the things that we focused on with the exterior of the building is fairly simple material choices. So all that gray material that you're seeing, there's two different colors of gray. That's basically just different kinds of brick. Already gotten some feedback that maybe that's not the Franklin County color, maybe that needs to be red brick, and that's the high school. And that's, that's what I was talking about, is that the aesthetic decisions, discussions have not happened. But fairly durable materials all the way around. I apologize for being a little jerky. Coming around to student entrance. Also had some discussion at one of the school board meetings about, you know, maybe exploring some sloped roofs instead of flat roofs, so that's certainly on the table as well, but that just hadn't really gotten that far. So that's kind of where we are right now in terms of the design. So a big part of this process is coming up with a cost estimate, and to, to do that, we need to come up with a hypothetical schedule, right? So this is a hypothetical schedule that I gave our cost estimators so that they would know when this thing could potentially be built. There's nothing set in stone about this schedule, but it was just, just something to get the conversation started. So say we, we, everybody's excited today. I hope everybody's excited today. Say everybody's excited today, and we said, we're going to start the design next month. It'll take us till about June of next year to get all the rest of the design done. There's a lot of work to happen in that, in that timeframe. That would put us at targeting a procurement, so a bidding period of basically July and the first half of August of next year, and getting the contractor started mid-August of next year, anticipate about 16 months of construction for this project. So it'll be complete sort of in the semester change of the 25, 26th school year. So, again, that schedule, there's nothing set in stone about that schedule. We just had to give something so that we could talk about price as time is money. So, just want to kind of give an overview of, of the different elements of the costs that we're going to share. Construction costs are really those hard costs. So those are the building and site costs. Some of it is based on historic square footage costs, but some of it is based on takeoff estimating. For example, the, the site work costs, we know how much earthwork we're going to move based on this concept. So that's a little bit more detail than just historic square foot costs. We're not including, and we've talked with the, the town of Rocky Mountain, we're not including any significant improvements to the Purdue lane intersection. Don't think that's going to be required. We are probably going to have to do like a, a turn lane that is included in the costs. For a CTE building, there's significant equipment costs, much more than any other typical type K-12 project. We have also included a small design contingency in this, in the, in these numbers because we're not finished with the design. So, as we get into this, the next phase, we're getting more in the details, you know, there may be a ground swell for a different program to include different type of equipment than we're anticipating. So it's, it's wise at this point, early on in the process, to include a little design contingency. We've also included escalation up, based on that timeline of the schedule that I shared before. If things get delayed a year, just add another five or six percent to all the numbers that you're going to see. Project costs. So those are paying the design team, any special inspections associated with the construction process, surveys. I think we've already got a pretty good survey of the Purdue property, but we might need a little bit more additional surveying work. Commissioning, the technology going to include, and also construction contingency. At this early, early phase, I would not advise us going forward with the project without a little bit of money in that construction contingency, just to cover those unexpected things that arise in every construction project. So, all that being said, this is where we, this is where we are with the numbers. Construction costs are about, over $64 million, another $7 million in project costs, for a total cost of $71.6 million. And again, these are numbers are escalated out to that, that bidding scenario, or that bidding schedule that we shared earlier of bidding it next summer, essentially. That is the full presentation. I'm happy to take questions, or if you guys want to chat, I'm happy to take it from there.
Anyone have any questions?
I heard you mention that, I guess the lower level is, kind of acts as a giant retaining wall. But you still, you still don't see the need of the slope over there to do more grading and more like signature number tan walls?
We think that the, so we've, we've actually done the grading at this point, but we've taken, it's been a feasibility study, but we took the site development a little bit further because of the, the significant slope on that site, and we wanted to make sure that we were in the, our site number was, was valid. So we've done a fairly detailed grading plan. What we've done is we've taken some of the high side off of that hill and actually graded it to be flat so it could be a field, because we needed that ground anyway to make the cut and fill work. And so, the only real retaining wall is going to be, again, within the building. On the, on the downside, we can just do it with a movable slope down to the more wet part of the site that we want to stay out of. So we don't feel like we're going to need any other site retaining walls other than the building retaining wall itself.
Jim, what are the considerations for a flat roof versus a pitched roof?
So, you all have flat roofs that are truly flat in your older buildings, right? We, we call, in the industry now, we call them low slope roofs as opposed to flat roofs, because we're actually put slope on it and make the drains work a lot better, the technologies work a lot better. I will say that in 90% of our K-12 projects, we do low slope roofs just because, mostly, usually because buildings like this are large, and a, a sloped roof adds a lot of volume to it. So that, you know, that, that building that we just showed is like 80 feet across, so that gable becomes extremely large. Now, we could do some, some mansards and things like that, but it's not something that we do regularly because there's some added costs to it, and the warranties that we get with the low slope roofs are competitive with the slope roofs. I, you know, if, if I was building a small building, I would go with a sloped roof every time because you're just not building that much more volume. But for a large building like this, it becomes a challenge. Both are on the table. I'm not saying we couldn't do it, but we certainly, we can do it if that's the direction we're getting.
Well, I would just make one comment, Mr. Chairman, at my back. I've been privileged to be a member of the steering committee early on and have had kind of an inside seat, if you will, to the dialogue and to the strategies, keeping in mind, I can easily say, and number one, I am very impressed that these renderings and the initial programmatic aspects of the drawings are totally what we talked about and the decisions that were made at the steering committee and staffing levels. And I commend you for that. I think that it's, I think that this, this layout is very cost efficient, and I think that you've done a lot to mitigate grade, which can cost us a lot of money if that kind of attention wasn't paid to this. So I think that, you know, I'm very impressed that you've been able to capture cost savings in addition to really good sound design and layout of this. And I think this is going to, you know, just in a very preliminary way, this, this facility is going to be a generational project for Franklin County, and it's going to allow our students. our students to come out of school, if not before, but certainly after, with good skilled, good jobs, making good money. Um, and then we've got this ancillary added benefit of community use in the evenings and perhaps weekends. So I, you know, this is a Franklin County project by, by definition, I think. And I just want to say that I am very grateful for the attention that's been paid to cost efficiency and design.
Well, I'll just say, I want to thank the committee. I know that, um, you know, having that many people together in a room sometimes can generate a lot of discussion, maybe not all, everybody agrees on everything, but, I mean, you can tell that the work y'all put into it and it's been a, a good collaboration and I want to thank y'all very much, uh, for all that work because it, it really does look like a great design to me. It, it looks like what we all wanted, which was a CTE project. So, um, one question, we, I know we were worried and I think you've answered this or maybe Mr. Spencer has. We were worried about the, the content of the soil, I guess, on the Purdue property, whether it was all rock or something. I don't know if it was or if it wasn't, but we determined that it's not as rocky as Rocky Mount can be in certain places, right? I mean, am I wrong about that?
We have not done any geotechnical work.
Okay.
Yet, right?
In the previous design that was done a few years ago.
Right.
Some very selective, uh, borns were done at that time, but I would not, we need to do newborns for how this layout is here, but those borns were favorable, yes.
Right. I remember at some point that was said, I could remember. And equipment costs and the construction costs, you're talking about equipment for classrooms?
That's correct. So the CTE building has a lot, you can, you just kind of think about everything that's involved in some of those classrooms. There's a lot more equipment associated with, um, with this type of program than a history classroom.
Sure.
So what we did as part of the study is we had a team go through and sort of do a inventory of your existing equipment because I didn't mention this at the beginning, but you all have a great CTE, thriving CTE program already. Um, it's just not a very good space for it. Um, so we went through and evaluated all of that equipment, um, and sort of put a, uh, estimate of the life left in some, in all the, all the pieces of equipment. So we, we came up with a budget that, um, was the total equipment and then we discounted that budget to come up with our, our budget for this number because we know that we're going to be able to transfer some of the existing equipment over. Um, but we're still like two and a half years away from opening the doors, well, two years away from opening the doors. So some of that equipment is going to wear out in between now and then. So that's kind of where that number was coming from. But we did take a pretty good look at all the equipment, all the spaces to figure out what we could transfer.
Thank you.
And I would add, I mean, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. It's very exciting. I would just add, for Franklin County, and, and Ms. Smith, I'm glad you brought this up as a community project because to make Franklin County competitive, we're competing with a lot of programs around us to attract businesses. There is a renewed understanding that, that CTE, quality CTE programs have to be in place and the research bears out, that's particularly strong for rural communities. So for our future, this is a tremendous investment. You know, we've got kids who are waiting to get into some of these programs. I mean, people starting to understand that a four-year education is not for everybody and it's not the right investment and you can help these kids transition and hopefully we retain a large percentage of those kids coming back into the community and that helps attract businesses. So I, I think this is wonderful and glad to see all the hard work that's been done and keep this moving forward.
I have one question, this is from Mr. Crutchfield. This design that we're seeing today.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Based on your experience, high school and current needs and possible projected future needs, does this meet your needs?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're really excited.
In addition, Mr. Crutchfield, can you speak a little bit, I know I've heard you speak of this, but about what this enhanced and expanded curriculum, uh, has the potential to do for students that are, um, might get their first, you know, their first choices met when, when they're selecting curriculum, uh, rather than kids having to say the second or third choice down the list, that so-called waiting list, if you will.
Right. You know, and as Mr. Henderson stated, we, we have great instructors, um, and they're doing great job, but maybe not in appropriate spaces. So, so we are limited with the number of students who can take certain things. So if, if I am a student who's super interested in masonry, that's always my example, with great masonry teacher, but you can put Max from the 12 kids in, in his lab. So those kids would not get their first choice of masonry because we don't have space for it. So they might get another construction trade and, and later on have to wait and hope they get in masonry, but what we're hoping in, in this design is appropriate space so we can meet the needs of all students who have, have interest. And those of you who have driven by the high school, you know exactly the programs with a wonderful automotive teacher, but, uh, we bought a tire balancer, I'm learning, and to get the tire balancer in this summer, we had to move things out of his lab to get the tire balancer in. So we just don't have the appropriate space to do the things, to learn on the technology that students need to learn. Um, you know, an automotive technician today has to have high skills in computer design. It's not just, um, you know, the, uh, you know, wrenches and changing old things. We're teaching our kids higher level skills, so this will definitely meet the need.
And Dr. Worley, uh, and I'm going to shut up. Would you speak a little bit to, um, the SOQs and the fact that students now need to come out with a certification? I, I know Mr. Crutchfield's nodding in the affirmative. Whoever could address that question? That was really eye opening.
Food services specifically?
Well, I just think that there's a requirement for...
So, so if you don't care, Mr. Worley.
No, no, please, John, yeah.
To get a diploma in Virginia now, Department of Ed says a student has to meet requirements in certain areas. You can take a, a year dual enrollment, a dual enrollment class, that, that's one way to, to meet a need, uh, which a fraction of our students do that, um, what 10 to 15%. But most of our students to qualify for a diploma in Virginia, whether standard or advanced, take a sequence of a career technical ed class. So they have to take automotive one and automotive two, or, uh, it could be criminal justice one and criminal justice two, but every student in Virginia has to, uh, along with taking, you know, English and math and, and whatever and pass the SOLs, but they're going to also have to have, uh, most likely, and I think the number, Spumgarner looked about 80% of our students meet the requirements by taking a sequential career technical ed class.
Thank you. And I, oh, sorry, I would add that for most of those buildings that you see that we would be expanding, there are significant and serious job shortages. Just in Cyggo and Lone, there's 175, 175,000 open positions. Think how much more quickly, if you can expand the space and get more kids in and get them trained, they can be, can move into those jobs much more quickly.
I'm Gillian from Farron College and, um, the reason why Dr. Powell and I are here today is because Farron College received, uh, this summer, a planning grant for a lab school from the Virginia Department of Education. And what they have asked us to do is to spend this next nine months, uh, planning to open or to, to submit an application, uh, for, well, a minimum of $3 million, it could be up to $10 million for the next five years to focus on, uh, career and technical education, uh, in this part of the state. And so, um, we are starting, um, in January, a small feasibility with, and we've, uh, already begun those meetings, um, with the building trades and with, uh, we've been meeting with Carillion and with, uh, the, the health services. But the areas that, um, that we've identified are the building trades, it's with, uh, nursing, paramedics, uh, EMTs, fire safety. Uh, we've also put in a grant to the Department of Education, the U.S. Department of Education, uh, that's a $3 million grant and that will also include precision agriculture. Uh, and then we have a $1.5 million grant into the tobacco commission for all of this. And the idea, we're a little afraid that we'll get all three at once, is to have a pipeline from high school, uh, students and with on-ramps and off-ramps, uh, into, uh, post-secondary education. And so that they come out, as, uh, Mr. Crutchfield was saying, with credentials. They could be, uh, NCC, uh, what's, sorry, JCP.
NCC.
ER, which are national credentials in the building trades. Uh, they could come out, uh, with a certificate from Farron College in one of those trades. Uh, our dream would be that they come out with an associate's degree, uh, because they've done dual enrollment, uh, and they have all that they need for associates by the time they finish high school. And then, uh, they could, uh, either go and work to meet the needs in this part of, uh, the state, or, um, they decide they want to come and finish their, um, four-year degree at the college. And so, uh, for us, as you were saying, this is a, this is a community effort because we've been meeting with, uh, Carillion. Carillion, uh, is desperate. And it's not just for health services. They are desperate for HVAC. Uh, they are desperate for electricians and for, uh, people to work in their maintenance. You cannot run a hospital without people who can run their systems. And so they are looking for that partnership with, uh, Franklin County Public Schools, with Farron, uh, and with, uh, with you all, government officials, to create these pipelines, both here in Franklin County and then obviously in Roanoke with their facilities there. So, um, the timing of this is such that the, the lab grant would not, uh, lab school would not open until, uh, at the earliest, it would be, uh, fall of 2025. Uh, and we can start small, but they want us to get big as soon as possible. So we're just bringing that, uh, to the table because, uh, there is state money, uh, the Governor Yenkin said aside $200 million for the state, uh, to do this. And so there is, and Brian Slater, who's the Department, uh, Secretary of Labor, is a Farron College grad. And so we, we have a little edge in there right now.
The timing of everything, it sounds like it's a good time.
To remove it.
I presented yesterday to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, their leaderships and, uh, and I'm not going to pin that my presentation was anything, but they all accept when I mentioned this and people's ears perked up and, and they got very excited around this, the potential, uh, project and, and the things that may come of it. And we had a, uh, study done by Hanover Group on employment projections for this region and, uh, and specifically for Franklin County. And two out of the three areas that they recommend that we focus on pertain to increasing CTE opportunities and increasing partnerships with businesses around CTE opportunities. And, uh, and I think the new facility would certainly help us achieve, uh, that objective. And regarding the, the space, I, I don't know, don't want to wade too deep into the details, but we are under OSHA guidelines. So if we don't have the square footage to put 20 kids in a, a CTE class, we can, uh, as, uh, John said, you know, we might only be able to put 12. So we're losing three, we might be losing eight kids depending on what the limits are for those classes if we don't have adequate space. And that's the case for a number of our programs currently. So unfortunately, students are turned away who have an interest and I think we all share the goal of wanting to keep every graduate of Franklin County High School in Franklin County if they want to stay here. We want to make sure they have the opportunities to become employable and that there are opportunities for them after they graduate. And I think those opportunities are here for them now to stay if they want, but the opportunities to gain those credentials before they get out of high school aren't currently available to every student because of the size limitations that we have. It's the one thing I'm still continuously asking about, I think members of the public as well. I mean, they keep hearing about it and they keep asking, you know, I, I'll, now I tell them I'm cautiously optimistic, but, uh, you know, I, I, I think that underscores that the community would like to see us and work on this as well. I mean, they, they know how important it is to the community. Go ahead, Mr. Attie, I'm sorry.
Um, thank you. Uh, so I'm certainly very excited about this, uh, been working in this in some form or the other for the, uh, the whole time I've been on the board. And one thing I just want to point out that we haven't mentioned is assuming we get the green light and we move forward with this, there's going to be a west campus that's now going to be vacant. And we have conceptual ideas, nothing concrete, but why don't we take that west campus and, um, to address some of the Children's Services Act costs that we have? We could turn that west campus into a behavioral center that we'd, we'd have to invest some there, but the initial end world, uh, estimations are that we would save about $700,000 a year in making that a behavioral center and not shipping kids up to Roanoke and taking all those transportation costs. So there's additional hidden advantages than just all the obvious ones that we've been talking about.
And John, we've talked, I know both our boards have talked about, and Mr. Whitlow's been very articulate about the CSA costs that we're all under the gun with and they're not sustainable, quite frankly. And, um, you know, we, the goal I think has been to try to pull these kids back in so that, you know, they can be schooled here, get a, you know, an, an education in their community, which is really, really important. But we're going to also save a lot of money by doing that. Um, and so I know that that has been talked about, uh, between our two boards for several years with regard to how do we do that immigration, uh, from special ed, uh, day placements back into the county? And I really like the idea that you all are thinking in terms of how can we continue to manage costs from some of the things that we share, um, in, in getting the students back in the community, helping us save money and doing the right thing for our, for our children and their families. So thank you for that.
Exactly, sure. Do you want to?
Just a few comments. I'm really excited about this. I campaigned for CTE my first year and saw it get shot down, shot down, shot down. I think this is a workable plan. Uh, I'm all for moving forward to approve with the design today. Uh, it, we are way past the egg ball on this. We're 20 years behind. Uh, we're developing a business park. We hear all the time, we don't have the workforce needed. This will give us the workforce. I just can't say enough about it. Thank you for those comments, John. I served on the CPMT board and I know these expenses are through the roof, so if we could use that other building for the behavioral, that would be, it's a win-win for everybody.
Absolutely. So what's the next step?
Mr. Whitlow, we're looking at you.
Yeah. I was. Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Churnfield. Yes. Thank everyone, thank, um, I know a lot of work went into this and, and the committee. So I guess the big elephant in the room is the big number in the room, right? You know, in terms of the cost and how to go about that. Uh, what, what I will share with, with, with the board and, and, and the boards, um, the county's financial values, you will remember Mr. David Rose, um, I think, uh, back at our January meeting when we were discussing the middle school project and the HVAC and the roof project, the middle school. Of course, Mr. Rose has worked with the county for many, many years in terms of our financial modeling, our annual debt service that pays for our large capital projects. And of course, uh, the middle school project, uh, the good news is, uh, Dr. Shears and I have had many discussions on this, uh, in July, late July, um, that project was approved for our literary loan, uh, for that project, which is a very competitive 3% interest rate for that project for the next 20 years. In addition, we've worked very hard with the Department of Education staff to push on the staff regarding a resubmital of an application for the middle school project for a construction grant program. We have another conversation next Friday, uh, with, um, the Department of Education, uh, facilities manager, budget manager. Uh, looking forward to that conversation as to that resubmital because that resubmital actually, uh, if awarded, uh, construction grant, and we think that we have the project to do that for the middle school, there's additional grant dollars coming. And of course, the county's very thankful for that $28 billion project. Uh, billions have been provided by the school system already and the ESRO funds and so forth for that project. We think we can get some additional billions. I don't know how, how many, but, but, uh, we're going to put a strong application in. Good news is that buys down how much we have to borrow from that literary loan and frees up more county debt capacity, if you will, for other projects. up more county debt capacity, if you will, for other projects, county projects, school projects and so forth. That being said, there's an opportunity with the school construction grant program with a project such as this, the career technical education. And Dr. Sears and I have had conversations as well as Mr. Terry, Mr. Carter on the finance side. And of course, we did apply for a school grant program, both for the CTE and the middle school. I say we, the school system is the applicant, I should say. And I think the intention is to apply for that grant again when that application submittal opens up. If awarded, that could provide a significant amount potentially of the design costs for the project and may can keep the timeline moving, maybe not exactly the timeline that you had presented, Mr. Henderson, but, but certainly gives an opportunity. If that construction grant program is not successful, that application for a project like the CTE, part of this then that leave the Board of Supervisors in, in terms of our financial modeling and so forth. So we have had Davenport Financial Advisors at the table with the Department of Education going through all of these different scenarios. We will again. And of course, our direction to Davenport has been to come back with some scenarios, much like Davenport had done back in January to meet with our board specifically. And we're likely looking more at a November timeframe when Davenport can get their work together to bring back to the Board of Supervisors. Here's some various scenarios, perhaps with a grant, without a grant, the total debt capacity for the county, how that could look like, how it's sequenced in, if you will. It's not to say that, that money would have to be borrowed even in the calendar year '24. It may be '25, '26 fiscal year. It's all how that is leveraged. And of course, our board knows every time the county's going to borrow, we've worked very, very hard to secure excellent bond ratings, which of course, with those bond ratings and the county's excellent financial condition, we were awarded, again reaffirmed with a AA+ or really one of the highest bond ratings really in the region. Of course, we borrowed for the landfill, the board will remember that this past summer and spring, very good results from that. And so we will bring back, Mr. Chairman, members of the board with Davenport, if that's the pleasure of the board, in a work session likely in November, some of this capital modeling, how would this look in terms of the financing of a project such as the CTE? And then perhaps in the meantime, certainly with the permission and the will of the board and certainly, I think, with, with the school board, working with the school administration staff and the Department of Education, looking at this potential school construction grant, not only for the middle school, but potentially for a CTE. And I think the, the good news in all of this, a lot of the work is done in terms of preliminary design work, certainly the work is done for the middle school and all, of course, it's already been bid and so forth and well underway. So I hope that gives the board maybe some insight as to maybe some next steps and where that may be and if the board has any thoughts for staff as we work with Davenport to bring something, some modeling back. And if I missed anything, I know our finance director's here with us, so if I missed anything, Mr. Carter's always going to try to keep us informed.
So what does the school board, what do you need from the Board of Supervisors at this juncture?
Seven, one day.
Aren't you the, the key one?
Well, it looks like via the timeline, certainly I think we have to approve the design first and foremost. Is that right, Mr. Henderson? Was that October 9th date on your, I guess your projected?
That was the scenario.
Scenario.
To move forward. That was when we would start.
Right.
I picked a, I picked a school work, I picked a school work meeting.
I think it is a school work meeting. So certainly, it sounds like everybody seemed amenable to that design, to that look. So that would be our first, our next step, I guess. I mean, truly, I, I think you'll, you'll need to tell us the discussions with Davenport to see about the funding end of it. I mean, I think we all have the desire to move forward, right? But I, I think, you know, now the, when the rubber meets the road, we have to determine the funding. Yeah. And so, you know, we're, we're ready to meet and do what we need to do on our part to, to expedite and do what we need to do. Am I wrong with anybody in the board? Have any comments or suggestions about that? I mean, we're, you know, I, I think that we are at that point where we're sort of, we're really at, at a hard point where we need to, I guess we just need to figure out if it's going to go forward.
Because what will be done between now and us meeting with Davenport in November? Is work going to continue with the A and E folks, Jim?
I think that's what he means from us. So we would take, yeah, we would take back in vote that we would at least start the next phase.
So, yeah, the only contract we have in place so far was the feasibility study, but the, our fee process we went through was to do the feasibility study and then roll into the regular project. So we would just need to put together a contract for that. If you wanted to start, if you wanted to start on the timeline that I suggested, we can do that. We would just need to get a contract together and get that approved with the board.
Well, our board's going to have to have the discussion with our financial advisors and have a discussion between us. You know, we need to vet out very carefully the numbers. And my concern was is, you know, what needs to be done until we have that conversation? What, you know, expectations on, on the school board to start?
It would almost take probably 30 days, 30 to 45 days even to get through what the contract to go, even to put that forward. So I think at the interim, we're already having conversations about whether the literacy loan pans out or do we have to shift to Plan B? So we could at least tentatively commit to keeping that timeline, trying to move forward, knowing that sort of in the back, I think we also have an agreement that, yeah, we want to keep it moving forward, but perhaps by the November meeting, we have a clear direction whether we need to modify. I think we at least go ahead and inform the contract for the design piece of it.
The application for the construction grant will be open this month. So we, that would probably be our next step chronologically would be to put in that application. And I don't know what the timeframe is for us finding out if it's been approved or not, but, you know, and I don't know how BDOE would view it if they approved it and then we decided not to fund it. I think that is what happened with some of their previous projects when they approved it and then there wasn't really the commitment to localities to fund. That's why there's $80 million left in the construction grant fund right now. So, you know, at least a commitment to proceed that far would probably be helpful if we could say, yes, we have, you know, the Board of Supervisors, it's on, you know, the support of, of us applying for this grant and proceeding that far in the process.
I sit here and listen to the proposal because I have all of them in the past ever since this project started. And I'll have to tell you, I like this one better than any that I've heard so far. That's what that piece of property was bought for, the CTE. That's why we went into negotiation with the produce, bought the property and paid that money. I did not like the proposal that was presented for was tearing down a part of the existing school. I thought that was, I thought that was, and I like this one a lot better. But my part, what Mr. Whitlow just said, we've got to meet with the financial advisors and they got to advise us because this is a lot of money. And I'm the one that's got to go back to the citizens, the Boone District, and sell them fondness. And I'm not ready to do that until I meet with the financial advisors and hear what they say, understand. I mean, I'll ask this, this timeline, where did it come from? I mean, I know what you're talking about, but, you know, these, these numbers can be changed. We're in, this is the first time this has been proposed to us.
Yes, so the, the schedule.
And then only here and say that we need to do this and we need to do that. We got procedures that we have to go through just to pick a number out of here. I think, I think the thing that we've got to do, so it's already been discussed, this is, this is a good plan, in my opinion. That's all it is, is my opinion. That and $5 will get you a cup of coffee if you want. McDonald's, you won't eat delicious. You won't eat delicious. But anyway, we're the ones that's got to go back and sell this.
Well, I think the timeline was just a guide. I don't think it was a hard set. I think, you know, I think for me, it was helpful just to see it, maybe not if it's an exact date, maybe how it would progress month by month. Like if we did start for, until November, then we might see 18 months from then, and you know, it was more of a, I think, a, a way to frame how long the project could take. So I, I think, I take your point that we, we got some more discussions to do, whether this, you know, you know, solidified tonight, but.
I think it was just to keep it, keep us moving, keep, keep the momentum behind, moving forward with the bagging design allows you all to, because you're right, this is a very heavy decision to go back and look at the funding, you're, you're exactly right, but at least we can keep some of the design piece moving while we look at the funding options.
And regardless of when, when it starts, this gives you an idea of how long that project will take.
I think Dr. Sears is asking for, there's a commitment from the board for him to go ahead and moving forward with the grant application, that's the next step, to get our name in the hat.
Yeah, I would think if, if it's dead in the water, then we don't want to put an application in, but if, if we feel pretty good about moving forward, then we'll submit that application. Not to say anybody has to make a commitment, just a one direction, you know, let us know what direction we're supposed to go in.
The opinion was, for me, I think if you name in the hat, I mean.
Better ask for it, get it.
Better ask for it. If you don't, if you don't ask for it, I can take the answer.
Yeah, then I can come get it.
And I'd say it's pretty competitive.
I believe we're far enough along with the sake to say, go ahead and do it, I don't think we're going to back out on it. Hopefully Davenport will have good news. And I like this. I'll hand the devil's playground, it looks like the county's ready to keep the hands busy. And it'll be good for the whole community. It's not just the school, I think that this is a good thing going forward for the whole county.
Well, if you noticed, Mr. Henderson, talking about public entrances, like specifically in the cosmetology, we used to do that with cosmetology here. I mean, they used to serve the public, the students did. I mean, we, you know, we talked about, you know, culinary services, doing some catering and some events in that space. I mean, so it really does have the opportunity to serve the public. And we want to show it off to them too. I mean, it's, it's part of, the high school's a beautiful campus. We want that building there, we want them to be able to see that, so. So I'm with you, Dick. I think it's, it's a good, it's futile, I think it serves the needs of what we need in it without being overly ostentatious and with, like when you talk about wasted space with the roof or whatever it may be, so I like that as a too. I think it's exactly, and determining or looking at the, I guess, the aesthetics of it could really mesh well with what we have.
And I would also add, you know, let's don't lose, get lost in the conversation, the aspects of when I refer to this as a community building and a community project, the work that, that I'm hoping the school board and administration will do, you know, on, on the other side of this project with interfacing, you know, with county economic development, with our local and regional businesses, so that we can set the students up, you know, for success and do some transitioning between high school and if they go over to Farram as an example. But the fact that maybe this space can be used for our citizens to come in in the evenings to do certain licensure requirements that they have in their various career capacities. So I think that this project is so much more, that's why I call it a community project. It's gonna, it's gonna be there for the citizens, it's gonna be there for our students, and it's going to be a tremendous asset for our businesses.
I think Dr. Sears, that grant application that you need to get, the ball rolling on because one, we don't know how much we're going to need to finance, and we know how much grant money you're going to get, the ball is out for. So I think that's going to go in and in. You might pick up an extra, you know, eight or $10 million from the state grant, that's that much less than we have to borrow. We all know. So I think for me, I'd say go ahead and get the ball rolling on that grant application.
I agree with what Tim said. I'd just like to make one other comment since Dr. had this here from Farram College. I served on the board at Patrick Henry Community College when they bought the motorsport facility and this, this would be such a great segue for kids from Franklin County to then go on to Farram College. Thank you for coming today. I was really excited to hear what you had to say.
Anyone else?
Well, I'll end by saying thank you to the Board of Supervisors. I think I can tell that y'all are excited about this project. We're glad that you are. We're glad that you want to partner with us and help these students because we know the need is there. We appreciate all your involvement, Chris, all your staff, everybody working with us and trying to help us negotiate all this stuff. We, it's, it's a good project and we're looking forward to it.
And I'd like to say thank you for all the ones that take a part in this committee and this design. I think this is part of Franklin County's future. It's shown for me, it's showing that there's a bright future out there, moving in the right direction. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to partner with Farram College. I think the board is taking some steps in this past year, trying to help support the college endeavors with the idea of trying to make it more affordable for our Franklin County students to go there. And, you know, we've set aside some county dollars to help with that and because we want to keep our kids, kids here. That was one thing I ran on in 2015. I had parents come college to him. I'm sick and tired, kids racing here, they live here, can't get a good job here. And I can say that this board, pass boards, we have worked hard to change that. And I think it's been a great time to work in this partnership with the school system, the college, the community to build that workforce so that we can be more attractive to these new businesses that we want to bring into our community and make Franklin County an even better place to live. It's hard to believe that it's been brought on to our new perfection, but it's certainly for approval. And I'd like to say thank you and appreciation for pass boards with the work they've done. Thank each one of you for coming today and sharing with us. I want to thank the designers, I grew up with Mr. Thompson. I didn't like the last design that we looked at, it's back in 2018, I think it was, but this design I'm excited about. I think it'll make that more needs, not just the day that I can sit here and make 40 years on that. And I think you're a compliment, each one of you, your job well done and I would just keep moving forward.
Agreed.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? I, you know, Nick, Rodney, what's your thinking as far as the school board moving forward with that grant application?
Ask for it, they don't need.
That's right.
We, if you don't ask for it, you're not going to get it.
That's true.
That's common. A car salesman one time, he was after me about selling the car. He was talking, I said, buddy, it don't matter where we start, it's where we end at.
That's right.
So if you don't ask for it, you start, it doesn't matter where we end at, it matters. And we got, we got, this is the first week, we got a lot of work.
Yeah.
A whole lot of work to do.
Anyone else have anything? All right, well, we have scheduled other matters for the Board of Supervisors. Did we cover that earlier? So, all right, well, in that case, the Board of Supervisors will recess at the Tuesday September 19, 2023 at 1:30.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. 42 years.
It's noted.